Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 2nd, 2021, meeting of the Gathersburg Planning Commission.
Thank you.
First, did someone need to jump in there? Chris, we all right?
We're good, sorry.
No problem. Let's see, I had to click, Chris, this is a technical note, I had to click continue after the pop-up said meeting being recorded. I don't know if that affects what you're doing on your side.
We're good.
Okay, thank you. All right, commissioners, back to the meeting agenda. First up is the approval of our minutes from May 5th, 2021. Is there a motion, please? Anybody?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the minutes of May 5th, 2021.
Second.
All right, it's removed and seconded, and I'll do the roll call vote. Commissioner Wessel?
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins? You'll need to get off a mute, but I saw you, I read your lips, you said aye.
Aye, sorry, without Lloyd, I feel lost.
Commissioner Winborn?
Aye.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Aye.
And I'll look aye as well, thank you very much. And I'll note for the record that alternate Sharon Cantrell is actually participating tonight as a full commissioner, as we, the regular members are not all present. So thank you for, for jumping in tonight. I know it's been a while. Hope you're comfortable with all this procedural stuff.
I've been, I've been watching you on TV, so I'm, I'm.
Oh, really? Oh.
Oh, yes, you're riveting. Thank you. Happy to be here.
There, there are much better things to watch on, even on free TV, but, but thank you for that. All right, next up is our consent agenda. We have three items on that tonight. The first is AFP dash 8900 dash 2021, construction of two additions at 205 Beckless Street in the MXD mixed-use development zone, and this is an amendment to final plan. The second item on the consent agenda is AFP 8907 dash 2021, construction of an enclosed deck located at 1 Seville Way in the R90C medium-density residential cluster zone, and that's an amendment to final site plan. And the third item on the consent agenda is AFP dash 8892 dash 2021, Four Seasons porch addition located at 9 Glazberg Court in the R90C medium-density residential cluster zone, and that also is an amendment to final site plan. Commissioners, any questions for staff on the consent agenda tonight? No. I've seen no one with questions. Is there a motion, please, on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Commissioner Wessel?
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn?
Aye.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well, thank you very much. That's, passage is the content agenda passes unanimously. Next up is a recommendation to the Board of Appeals for BOA 8796 dash 2021, Peter Achampong, pong, excuse me for the, the pronunciation of that, for Restoration Chapel International, special exception for religious use at 841 Quince Orchard Boulevard Suites A and B in the C1 local commercial zone, and presenting from staff is Carolyn Sidon. There she is. Hi Carolyn, good evening.
Good evening. This is a special exception recommendation to the Board of Appeals on special exception case BOA 8796 2021 for religious use at 841 Quince Orchard Boulevard Suites A and B. If we can go to page 107. One more, one more over. There we go. This is the Diamond Farms Office Park, 841 is shown in the, with a yellow pointer there on the corner of Quince Orchard Boulevard and Rabbit Road. The subject property is owned C1 local commercial pursuant to Section 241122 of the city zoning ordinance, churches, temples, and related religious facilities such as seminaries and cop, and convents are permitted in the C1 local commercial zone as special exceptions after approval by the Board of Appeals. If we can go to page 108, that's just a closer, more close-up version of the two suites, 841 A and B. I am going to turn the presentation over to Mr. Peter Achampong, who is here on behalf of the applicant Restoration Chapel International, who is the contract purchaser for the property. Peter, if you are, I think you're here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, if we, and if you want to go to the next slide, just, just the, just tell them they want, you know, as you're going to change slides.
Okay.
Evening. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you. Okay, basically, this is a religious organization. The main branch is at Capitol Heights. It's a very small branch. We just started. And as you can see, it's just a small congregation. And basically, under 60, which we, we, after looking at it, there are various assets that are very good, and we think this place can be used for this location, for these purpose, and it's not too crowded. And I think we, that's why we are appealing to, to the city to help us get this location for purposely religious purposes only. And that's it. And our, our time of service is normally at the weekends, and it's from that, we're close at 12, and at that time, we don't have a lot of customers around, and it's not a noisy church, it's medium. So it's just an appeal to you to allow us to, to use this place for our, for religion. The next slide, please. Let's see if there is anything there. Yeah, basically, we, we don't have a lot of cars to park. Many of them do not drive. We come in a, you know, in a combined convoy, so this will not disturb their adjacent apartments. The next slide. Yeah, this is a typical Sunday, and it was not too crowded. And the next slide, please.
I think there are some interior pictures after this slide. There you go.
Yeah, yeah, this is, I mean, after service, this one was a Sunday after service. And normally, and even this was the COVID arrangements whereby it was very sparingly, was, was 25%, and we were okay, we were not sometimes not being up to the 25%. It's just a very small organization, and there are two exits. Two exits whereby we have the fire exit, and the main exit, which really well open, in case of anything, we can exit safely. Yeah, this is the ground, the grounds, the ground side, the ground floor, and it's just the 841 A and B that we're gonna use. We have some offices and all that in there. Yeah, and the parking should be fine. We don't have any problem with parking at all. If you will, based on this, I think the city can help us to use this place for, for our church.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anything else on the presentation?
If you, no, not as, basically, no. I think I've covered the ground.
Okay, let me ask you just a couple of quick questions. Will you all be doing a sign on the building to, to, to label the, the entrance of the church or the, or label the location?
If there will be a sign, to be a very little sign, that will come, become, that will comply with the, the area, and definitely we need approval, which we have not yet thought about, yes. But that's at now, there's no sign.
Any other, any other improvements to the building, or essentially you're using it as is?
As it is.
Okay, very good. Commissioners, any, any questions? Sharon, please.
Pastor, I've seen in two different places that there were 60 people allowed, and then I saw somewhere else that they were looking for up to 80 people to be allowed to worship. Is there a maximum that's allowed? I guess maybe this is for, for staff rather than for the pastor, but.
No, after we did the estimate, the final estimation, we found out that we are not even up to 80. That's why we just left it up to 60.
It's a good point. The, the conditions that are being recommended by staff include one that would limit it to 60. So is that acceptable?
Yes.
Is that right, Carolyn?
Yeah, we, yeah, I think the initial application had said 80, but then applicant statement, and we've discussed it over the course of time, and they, they, they're limiting it to 60, and the, and the special exception would limit it to 60.
All right, any other questions?
This is Danny, just a comment, because this is right down the street from where I live, and they're adjacent to Rabbit Road, so there's, there's no parking issues, because there's a major street there, so there wouldn't be an issue with parking.
Okay, thanks, thanks for that. All right, any other questions on the presentation? All right, I think, Chris, what we need to do is go ahead and play. I don't know that there's anybody waiting on deck to testify, but just so we open that opportunity up, if there is anybody that wants to call in, would you please play the, the little prep video on how to, how to make comment?
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom, and you're on a desktop or a laptop, and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
Okay, so I'm looking at the attendee panel. I don't see raised hands, so Carolyn, might we move on to the recommendation, and then we'll, we'll go to discussion.
I, I just wanted to mention, because it went by quickly on page 116, that was the parking chart. If we can just pull it up real quick, just to dot all the i's and cross all the t's. The, the parking chart, chart shows that there, they don't need a waiver, they have more than enough spaces. Once it's been recalculated for the church, we took away a couple thousand feet for office and put it, calculated four seats for one parking space per four seats, and that parking chart, that still comes out, okay, there are 295 spaces in the lot, and 289 are required, so they meet their parking requirement. So with that, I will read the recommendation. Staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony, and the staff report findings and recommendation, recommend approval of BOA 8796 2021's special exception to the Board of Appeals, finding it in compliance with Sections 24-112.2 and 24-189 of the city code with three conditions that are included in your package.
Very good. And I think to paraphrase all that, really what we're looking at is if the proposed use is compatible with the adjacent uses, and if the use as proposed would have any impact on the existing existing uses on the site now, and I don't see any reason to assume it would have any impact, any, at least negative impact, probably a positive effect, and it seems to be compatible considering the, I think generally speaking, business hours use of the site versus where this would probably happen evenings and weekends as a kind of a counter to when, when the busiest time of use is there. Although we don't have anything necessarily in the, in the record that says that specifically, I think it's a, it's a fair assumption. So I, I see this a really appropriate use, and any other concerns with commissioners?
This is Danny. I, I have none. I think it will integrate well into the neighborhood. I mean, it's right adjacent to Brown Station Elementary School, and also to a city facility, I think, there isn't, I think it's right next door to.
You said.
Yeah, yeah, so, so I think it will integrate well into the neighborhood. I, I think it's a great addition.
Good point. Anybody else? Okay, so staff is recommending that we recommend approval to the Board of Appeals with, with the three conditions. So is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the commissioners' testimony, and the staff report, and our discussion findings and recommendations, I recommend approval of special exception BOA dash 8796 dash 2021 with the three conditions that were presented to us this evening.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
It's moved in second, and Commissioner Wessel?
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn?
Aye.
Commissioner Cantrell? And I'll vote aye as well, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Good luck. Look forward to having a long and, long and healthy stay in this, this space.
Right, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is another recommendation, this one to the Marin City Council on Z8814.
Can I leave?
Yeah, yes, thank, thank you. Next up is a recommendation to the Marin Council for Z8814 dash 2021 zoning map amendment requesting to rezone 35 and 37 South Summit Avenue from the R90 medium-density residential zone to the CBD central business district zone. Recommendation to the Marin City Council, and presenting from staff is Laura McFood. Good evening, Laura.
Good evening, commissioners. Could the tech team bring it packet page 186, please? This is the planning commission recommendation on zoning map amendment Z8814 2021. A joint public hearing for this was held on April 19th. The planning commission held its record open until 5:00 PM, May 21st, 2021, and at the time of the commission's record closing, there were 23 exhibits in the record. As discussed during the public hearing, this application proposes to rezone two properties, 35 and 37 South Summit Avenue, which are highlighted and read on the screen, from the R90 zone to the CBD zone, in compliance with the city master plan. As noted in the staff report, this is a standard method zoning map amendment, and the requirements for the standard method map amendments, they're outlined in Section 24196, and it does not include any type of, any requirement for any type of site development plan. City Code Section 2410A outlines the findings required for approval, which include that the application complies with the purposes and intent of the zone, and that the application will be compatible and harmonious with the existing and planned surrounding land uses. As the applicant discussed in their joint public hearing presentation, they intend to maintain the properties as single-family detached residences, but the primary structure on 37 South Summit is currently legally non-conforming. The dimensional restrictions in the R90 zone would prevent the applicant from making certain improvements to the home that they like to make for, in order to increase livability and meet the family's needs. So this rezoning would provide greater flexibility for those types of modifications and improvements. Some concerns were raised during the joint public hearing about compatibility with the adjacent residential neighborhood should the properties be redeveloped in the future. The applicant has submitted a statement in response to these concerns, which was Exhibit 20 in your packets. Any major change to these properties would require review and approval by the city planning commission, and then also because of the age of the structures, the historic district commission would have to review any demolition. Additionally, as noted in the applicant's response letter, the city's master plan also acknowledges the surrounding context, and states that any redevelopment of these properties should be sensitive to the adjoining residential neighborhood. So, in other words, any proposed substantive change cannot necessarily be done by right, there would be this higher level of compatibility reviews. Staff received a total of six public comments on this application as of the closing of the planning commission record, and of those, one was opposed and five are in support of the application. So staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend approval of zoning map amendment Z8814 2021 to the Marin City Council, based upon the findings of Section 2410A and the evidence in the record. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant Doug Wagner is also available here for questions.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Wagner. Thanks for being here. Laura, you know, one of the things that I think might be helpful, just for context, would you pull up the zoning map overlay? I think it's, so it's the packet page 181. Just to remind everybody, it, it, it's, it is a continuation of a pattern that's, that's emerged already in this area for, for some of the rezoning. There, that's good, thank you. So obviously, it, it abuts a CBD parcel. And although directly across the street is an R90, the use is probably as consistent with CBD as R90, because I think we allow churches in R90 anyway, but so there would be no, no compelling reason to see those, see that rezoned, but in terms of use and compatibility, all of that makes some sense. So the only thing that really stays adjacent to it that's R90 would be the properties to the rear, and if you hop the street, a couple that are on the, on the corner there, and it goes back to CBD again. So one of the things that's encouraging is not a, it's not trying to lead the charge and blaze a trail on being CBD zoned. It's, it's really pretty consistent with how that, how Summit Avenue has, has been emerging over the last few years. Excellent, thank you. All right, so our record is closed, and so we won't be hearing public, public testimony tonight, but commissioners, any questions for Laura on the presentation? No? All right. And you went right into the recommendation, so we can, we can move to discussion. Are there any reservations from commissioners on the, on assorting a recommendation to council to, for the rezoning?
No, this is Danny. I, I read, I had to read it a couple times. I guess the, the, on page five of the the city's, the discussion, and, and it, I was just a little confused. It said they, they had no plans to develop this, but, but then I understood what they're saying. They're not gonna like develop it and put a, like an apartment building on it or anything like that. They're just, they just wanna make improvements to the existing structure, to, the two existing structures. So I, I don't have any problem with this, but I did wanna say this, this really was a whole new spin on going to grandma's house, so I thought it was nice that they'll be right next door. The families, you know, can, can, you know, co, coexist, you know, together. I think that's a nice idea.
Yeah, and to, to piggyback on what you were saying, to be clear, and Laura brought this up, substantial changes or redevelopment would still require a planned process.
Right.
That would get public scrutiny and staff, staff review and all that. So it doesn't open the door for a lot of changes. It'll still
Right.
process. Should, should those be the, the wishes of the own property owners?
Exactly.
Yeah, and I think, John, I think that, for me, is the, the crux of why I, I have no concerns or no issues here, is that there is still a process in place. If it was a sort of, you know, by right, here's your, here's your office building, or your apartment building, and there's no, you know, review process, that'd be, it'd be a different thing, but, you know, we still have an opportunity to ensure that anything that happens is compatible with the neighborhood, and with the, you know, the historic character of the, of the neighborhood. So I have no concerns.
Anybody, oh Sharon?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I was really appreciative of all the letters of support, Mr. Wagner. So I think your, your friends came out in force, and your neighbors are very supportive, so I'm, I'm happy for that.
And, yeah, Sharon, that's a good point, and I liked the letter from the family, too. That was really helpful.
On, on top of all that good news, it's actually good zoning. So I think it's the extension of that, of that commercial zone. I think it's, it's the right zone. But details of the site plan aside, scale of that particular property aside, you know, entry, exit, corner issues, compatibility as you turn into the neighborhood, backyard lot issues, all that kind of stuff, completely aside, it's the right zone to extend out to the, the major arterial right-of-way, so.
All right, very good. All right, if there are any, no other comments, I think all the commissioners had a chance to speak. Is there a motion, please?
All right, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Danny, please.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I recommend that planning commission, based on the evidence and testimony submitted into the record, and the findings of the staff analysis, recommend approval of zoning amendment Z dash 8814 dash 2021 to the Marin City Council.
Okay.
Just, if you would finish that sentence, the, on the recommended.
Oh, did I miss something else? Hang on. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay, um. Finding it in compliance with Sections 24-196 and 24-10A sub two, sorry.
Great, thank you. Okay, thanks, Sharon. Seconds it. So let me do the roll call vote. Commissioner Wessel?
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn?
Aye.
Commissioner Cantrell? And I vote aye as well. I, I'm, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Wagner. I appreciate you going through the process, and look forward to, to many more years of your family on the site, and, and you've been good neighbors to the city also. Thank you.
Good luck.
Appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you. I have to smile because I have it in front of me. I, I keep a list of all the commissioners. I use the same order every time we do that roll call. And really, I did just look up and go across the pages, but I have this, I'm just definitely afraid of like one of them dropping off or something, and I'll miss it. It's my, it's my Zoom phobia. All right, well, we're through the original, the, the main agenda. We're up to, from the commission, so Sharon, may I start with you, since you're at the top right box where I'm sitting?
I'm happy to be here, and liked the, the, all the new additions that were approved today. One is right down the street from me, so I'm, you know, happy to see a lot of, a lot of construction going on and improvements.
It's encouraging indeed to see this kind of development going on in the city, absolutely. Matt, anything tonight?
Just a warning to Sharon, I guess, that now that we're all gonna start traveling again, I'm hoping you're available. I know we've been, we've been neglecting your, your step in for the council for, you know, more than a year, you know, March 13th, but, but I'm, I'm, I'm eager to let you sit in some nights when, when travel starts again, so thank you.
Well, actually, that brings me to what I asked Greg, that City Hall is opening, and, but this will be virtual until October. John, is that right, our meetings? Correct? Until you move into the new site, right?
Well, it may or may not be ready, but what we understand right now is that meetings will begin in person in October. It might be back at the old council chambers. We're not sure yet.
All right. Phil, anything tonight?
Nope, nothing for me this evening.
Okay, and Danny, how things going with you in the state, State Planning Commissioners Association?
Good, good, good. I did wanna, I did wanna echo what was previously said, that it's really nice to see activity going on. I think Sharon, Sharon had mentioned that. It's wonderful to see people trying to get back to some sort of normalcy, and, and do projects and live their lives, so that's wonderful to see. But in terms of what's going on with MPCA, we have, we have settled on Solomon's Island for our, our October annual conference. It's gonna be wonderful. I'm urging everyone to, to really consider going out. We have some great things planned. We're gonna have like a cruise there on the river. We're gonna have milkshakes. We're just gonna try to make it really nice this year, because we didn't, weren't able to do it last year. So I'll have more details for you in the coming, coming months, but it's, I'm tentatively scheduled for October 26th and 27th, and, and if you all can join us, that would be great. And I'm gonna probably solicit some help from you all, as I always do, because I always count on you all to do a great job and represent the, the city, and basically Montgomery County as well. So more, more details later.
Looking forward to it. And boy, you know, Maryland is known for their milkshakes. All right, thanks, Danny. So from the staff is up next. Greg, you wanna start with our?
Not much for me tonight. Just a reminder, we have two, we have a joint public hearing coming up on June 7th on the Lake Forest Mall, and a joint work session on the Lake Forest Mall master plan as well on June 14th. I believe all the commissioners have already gotten back to us, so I appreciate the, my use on your availability. And the next planning commission meeting is on June 16th.
Great, and let me echo one thing that Rob offered via email to the commissioners. There's quite a bit to get through on that Lake Forest package, and, and the materials that have been put together, remarkable in a way, how much, how much information, how much feedback has been incorporated into the process. And he's offered to, to be available if you have questions, have anything you wanna discuss before, before the meeting, so please don't hesitate to reach out to him, to Rob, that is, if you, if you do have any questions or issues from the, from all that material.
John?
Yeah.
And Monday, I guess I don't need to attend. I'll watch on TV, but then the work session I will be attending. Is that correct?
Technically, yes. You know, we, I'm trying to think, formally, it's a joint public hearing, so we're not doing anything regulatory. You could attend like this if you wanted, essentially, as part of the, the gallery, so it's up to you. And, and as far as, is every part, do we have all commissioners in play on, on, on Monday, Greg?
As of right now, yes.
Okay. You know, it's, it's interesting point. Maybe you can refresh my memory, Greg, on rules of procedure. The alternate obviously can't. The alternate, obviously, can't vote, okay, do regulatory things when we have a full commission sitting, but they are allowed to ask questions, correct, and participate in discussions?
Yes.
Yeah. So Sharon, you know, if, if you want to attend for the purpose of being able to ask questions, if you want or need to, there's nothing wrong with that.
As, actually, if all the commissioners are in attendance, the commissioner cannot act on a regulatory idol. That includes asking questions and participating.
Oh.
Oh, it does, okay.
That's why I haven't.
That's correct.
Okay.
Sharon, I, I, I'll volunteer to put Matt in my trunk for you. So.
Again, again.
Again.
Just what you want to do, Danny, conspire to commit a crime on TV.
Exactly.
All right, well, thanks. I'm sorry for that, for misleading you, that I, I thought you were allowed to. Okay, but definitely plan to be at the work session if that happens. All right, thanks, Greg. John, something, anything tonight?
So that was my big item tonight, the joint public hearing next Monday. Just to clarify, the work session the following Monday is still tentative. But we think it's probably gonna be needed. The idea is, there's a lot on the agenda on Monday night. And we, Tom and I have been having individual calls with each of the council members, letting them know that, you know, it's a full agenda. And the presentation's gonna be long. Rob's presentation, which is amazing, by the way, is about forty-five minutes long, I think. And then we do expect a lot of comment, public comment, a lot coming from some of the owners. Montgomery Village, Asbury, a lot of players have been involved throughout the public comment period, and they're gonna want to weigh in. Of course, they have, you know, they've sent in their testimonies, and, which is extensive, which I know you all are aware of. So, but we, we are trying to avoid rabbit holes on Monday night because after the public hearing is the NOVAVAX sketch plan policy discussion, which, you know, you're, you've made your recommendation, so you're out of it, but the mayor and council need to weigh, you know, need to make their decision. And that's critical. We want, we want to get that done Monday night. So that's why we scheduled the work session the following Monday. And we've got all night to talk about Lake Forest Mall on the following Monday, if we need to. So we have asked the council, and we're asking you all, you know, if we start going down a rabbit hole, we just recommend that the following Monday. Although we may not need that following Monday, we'll see. And that's it for me tonight.
All right, thanks very much. Frank, anything tonight?
Nothing, nothing further for me, but thank you.
And thanks for weighing in on the rules of procedure. I'm sure glad you were here, because we could have, I could have created all kinds of mess with that if you hadn't said something.
No, not a problem.
Okay. All right, thanks all. If there's nothing else, have a good evening, and we're adjourned.